Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Halifax Planning Board Meeting on May 18th, 2023. The Planning Board Meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. The agenda: Tonight, we're going to recognize our new board member after the election. We're going to reorganize the board. We have appointments and hearings to begin at 7 o'clock. We have a hearing for 416 Plymouth Street Kennedy K-9 Camp for a site plan review. We have a hearing continued for 314 Plymouth Street, request for special use permit and site plan review. We have a hearing continued from 359 Plymouth Street for a site plan review for contractor storage. And we have discussions and action to be taken on Ryder's Way. We don't have any signatures tonight. We have bills for Express Newspaper for 416 Plymouth Street, the Kennedy K-9 Camp. We have meeting minutes from April 6th, 2023, and we have correspondence from local towns. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor? Tonight, voting, we have our new member, Tom Millius, at the far left of me, Brendan Elliott, myself, Amy Trup, Rick Murray, and Bert Gainer. So, welcome, Tom. And I would motion for reorganization of the board. Anybody have a motion?
Motion?
Oh, I'm making a motion for reorganization. Or do you want a motion for positions?
Whatever you want to do.
As far as the chair goes, I'd like to nominate Tom Millius for Chair of the Planning Board.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'm having a hard time with that just because he's just brand-new, but you are a selectman, so...
I'll go with a aye.
Motion moved.
We need a motion for vice-chair. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for Bert Gainer, vice-chair.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Seeing as no movement is opposed, Gainer will be vice-chair. We need a motion for clerk. Do we have a motion for clerk?
I would make a motion for Amy Trup to be for clerk.
I'll second that. Anyone else?
Who said, "Amy"?
Mm-hmm.
No, it's not me. That's good.
So, is that... My role tonight's going to be a little bit hybrid role. I have not been involved in any of these continuing hearings, so I probably won't have a whole lot to offer. I have read up on some of them, but honestly, I have not had a chance to study plans, so I'm really not positioned to take the role myself this evening. That doesn't mean something cannot happen this evening because we have more than four of them, so we're in good shape in that hearing. I may lean on the former vice-chair to comment on some of these hearings. But we'll start with what we need to do. Apparently, this board does their bills at the end, is that correct?
It is.
Okay. So the board starts with me?
Yeah, the selectmen.
So I guess where the...
So what we've done is, sorry, what we've done is, instead of assigning exact times for different points in case if we couldn't make it?
So everybody can sit around for 45 minutes waiting for this?
We put everybody at seven, and then we put them in order, and then if they're here, they go, if not, the next person up.
Makes perfect sense.
Yep. Well, I think we came up with this during NFL playoff time, somewhere around there. It's worked out pretty well for us so far.
Sort of. I didn't think of it that way.
Is handling the way it was just to have very short in those 10 minutes or to do them all at the same time?
Yep.
First hearing offered this evening, and this is, correct me if I'm mistaken, this is a first-time hearing, this is not a continuance, is that correct?
It is a first-time hearing because they withdrew last summer. They were in front of us last summer.
But as far as this presentation goes, this is the first time?
Yes, correct.
All right, so this page is. Who is here for that hearing in 416 Plymouth Street?
Lieutenant Kennedy. So I'm proposing to have a dog training, dog daycare boarding, and self-serve dog wash Saturday at 416 Plymouth Street. We are going for full indoor, there'll be no outdoor area, and we would have space for about 40 slots throughout the day. Everything is on rotation. We would have a one-to-one staff number to every $10 ratio, but there was likely to have to be more than 20 dogs per group with two staff at a minimum and on rotation, so all dogs get great rest in between. It's more of a structured setting. You have to focus on training, teaching good beginners, and just all around, giving the dogs a chance to enjoy it more and not be stressed and accretive.
Does the site currently have a site plan?
It needs an updated site plan, and because they removed all of that area out in the back left, they added a use, and we don't have a full site plan with all of that change.
I think the site plan in this particular instance should be attended. There has been a lot of changes to the site. I'm not suggesting that you shouldn't do this. I'm just concerned about the site a little bit. I don't think there's a lot of vacancies inside the existing structure, so traffic at the moment, I don't believe, is an issue, but this does change the traffic flow, and it has been addition to the site, which has also changed the traffic flow, at least on one end of the building. Is the owner here this evening or just the judge?
Jessica. On that site plan though, we did discuss the flow of traffic previously for this spot, so the flow of traffic would be in one way around the back of the building and then out the other side of the bank. And we had signs marking the entrance here and exit only on the opposite side.
Do we have that on a plan anywhere?
I did submit, I submitted the site plans with those marked on there.
With this filing? It's just not an updated site plan. That's the problem. So, going back a little ways, not to...
No, please, please.
There've been a few businesses that have tried to come through and open up into this building, being one of them, right, last time? And the big, when the owner of the building was here last, a year ago?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was requested that we got a new site plan, an updated site plan for the building and all of its uses, including some of the changes that have happened at that location. Since then, a site plan has not been done, so it's been very difficult for new businesses to come in, like Nesrela, that was a little bit of an issue. But for some reason, no updated site plan seems to want to be, and it's not the leaser, the lease, the people leasing the building, it's the owner of the building, not calling him out specifically, but it seems to be an issue getting an up-to-date site plan so we can move forward with new businesses. It's kind of...
I...
Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay.
The only thing we did miss on that, we did have hours of operation, and there were concerns about the pickup and drop-off, so we had worked it out so that there would be a...
A flow?
A clockwise flow, and there was a parking space or something right by the back door that was also, so hours of operation, and now the elimination of the door rink, the last area. But other than that, those were the...
The site plan has been the big stickler for everybody that's trying to go in there, isn't it?
Yep.
Just having an updated site.
The entire site plan, as opposed to just...
I don't know why it's not getting done. I mean, well, I don't want to be an impediment to your business, but I really think a site plan is important in this, which I think a site plan for any business needs to at least be presented and/or updated. It's always up to the board if the board wants to waive any particular issue, but the board should have a basis to start with that's accurate.
But we did have a site plan for when Nesrela went up front.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it wasn't the site plan for the entire spot, so to, in my eyes, adding the use, we should have done a site plan ahead of that, because we, when, did you know Denzel De Souza was going to make the pump house, you know, that was separate to the back left? He was going to make that a mechanic shop, and that was going to be another additional use, and we had said to him that we need a site plan from the owner, and then that never occurred, and then there was a two-to-one vote that let Nesrela run a couple, what, a month and a half ago? And that was sort of sad because we finally had that moving forward to getting a site plan for the entire property, because this, I don't know if you agree, but the change of all the drainage and everything with all of that clearing and then added uses and flow of traffic...
It wasn't expected, Tom. It was, the property itself was expected, but like Amy said, the back portion, which is 20 acres of wood...
That's where the new septic...
Did not show where the building was.
Yes.
The only thing that was submitted was for a site plan with the actual parking lot and up to the wetman's area.
Well, as far as drainage goes, I didn't see any evidence of impervious material, so I don't know how much impact that would have.
I have gone by, and I have pictures of it puddling.
What, there it is, the puddle of the river. It's actually better now than it was in the past.
Right, but then they also cleared out, I don't know the amount, but your son and I even talked about this, from the parking lot out in the back, all of that area was also cleared out. So they've done quite a lot of work to the site, and we don't have any of that on a site plan.
We've basically defaulted to asking and requesting a site plan from every business that's coming in, just so that there's not a discrepancy of waivers. It's been a site plan, and then automatically defaulting to a site plan review for basically everyone, so that there's no...
Has the board been consistent with that?
Except for this instance.
I think we, well, we're not talking about that anymore, I don't think, but I think we've been really consistent with that, right? Asking for the site plan for like the last two years.
All recent sites have had a site?
For like the last year.
Yeah, about a year, last year and a half.
So...
Since Liddell, since Liddell on Holm Street, we've decided that everything goes to Piera Engineering, and everything has a new site plan.
Correct.
If there's significant changes.
Any business citing should at least have a site plan review. If it has an existing site plan, it needs to be updated, or like I said, always has the option of waiving anything that they care to waive or think that's reasonable to waive, but...
Right.
I think this puts a burden on this particular, including about five other ones that are threatened.
Yes, Mr. Nesrela had to actually pay for his own site plan because Mr. Maloney was not going to forgo the cost of a full site plan, and Mr. Nesrela had to, just as an example.
That's basically what's held you up, right? Is the site plan to this point?
Yeah.
Because if we had an updated site plan, I bet you we probably wouldn't see you again other than when we're dropping our dogs off, so...
I spoke with him, and like what he had been saying before was that he was, I guess, because nothing new had gone into the building yet at that time, that there were no changes, so he didn't think that he had to do a new site plan for the building itself, and then I guess the lay-in.
That's a whole 20 years ago.
Obviously, I can't speak for him, but I mean, I'm not moving business to the space or adding any parking or anything, so I mean, I'd have to talk to him again about getting a site plan.
I think, if nothing else, it's to his advantage. It makes it a lot easier, because even though, you know, you're not changing in physical size of the building or anything, but uses do make a difference. They do have impact. For instance, you've already discussed the fact that you're going to be traveling around the building, that's a change. Sounds like a good idea, I'm not suggesting it isn't, but it's still a change, and it still needs to be reflected. How do we approach the board's view?
Welcome to the board!
I agree.
That's how, that's how we've all felt, and for some reason, it's all been a mess.
Oddly, you're saying the same thing I've been saying for the past year and a half.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think anybody should be exempt from at least a site plan review.
Right. Can we send that to a site plan review, though, if it's not updated?
No, we need a site plan review from the owner, and then, you know, if we feel we need to get a review, we could send it to a review engineer. I don't think that's necessary necessarily in this case, but we should have an updated site.
They are splitting the old gym that was the church.
Yeah, I did see that.
So then the parking, because now they'll add another unit.
I'm not sure that the handy say that's not a good idea. That's another story. The problem is...
Well, what's the date on that?
I'm just looking for it.
I don't know, I thought it was...
It's up a little more. Do, oh.
Well, this was received, well, this was received.
Yeah, that's not what it was. Because we haven't had a new one since.
Yeah, this year?
Yeah, right. This isn't updated or written.
Well, this was...
This is Nesrela's, right? This is what they did for him.
Brendan didn't have a problem, was it?
Right.
You know, he paid for all that, but that was totally separate from the whole different entity.
That's true.
That's why Pat said he just didn't pay for it.
And it's all part of the same thing.
Yeah, it just couldn't see...
So this was the area by the park that you had once, and that was...
Yeah, right, in the suburbs, I think, of course.
Up here.
I believe that...
Something's here. You see what I'm saying?
But the dog, this is the other side of the hill here. Yeah, yeah, but we're talking about his business, not anybody else's business.
Well, we're talking about the site plan.
Right. Is that the one that Webby did for Nesrela, that one there?
Yeah, without the buildings on it.
I don't see anything situated on it.
So this isn't a site plan that was presented by the owner, this is a site plan that was presented by Nesrela?
Yeah, because the owner just, he just keeps on, he just pretty much says, "No, I'm not going to do it." That's pretty much what it sounds like.
I don't know why.
I mean, how many times, how many times we've been through this?
Five, at least.
You know? How many times he been back is getting ridiculous.
Has anybody looked through the...
The file?
The existing files, because...
Yes.
I'm pretty sure when he bought the property, he did do a plan of some sort.
Yeah, but he'd put on new septic in since then.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, because the septic before was up on Parker's Way.
Yeah, right.
Well, so what, what's the temperature of the board? You have suggestions?
I feel like if this plan was done, he'd have the whole place built.
I know, I know. But like Tom was saying, you know, you're changing the use, you know, but he had, he did come here with plans before showing the traffic flow. At the, at the time, you wanted an outdoor kennel, and I guess conservation didn't like that idea, so he's put everything indoors now.
There were stipulations about hours and, and what was the waste pickup and whatnot. That was all worked out, lighting, everything was all worked out, and then you couldn't move beyond that.
Was it the same layout? Did that change, or is it...
You mean the same footprint with the school?
Yeah.
Up with the, with the building and so, that's correct. There's no changes in the footprint.
And everything else had at least been addressed once. Maybe we need to get, just get that refreshed, but...
But what about the fact that they're adding more units after they just added another business all the way over to the left, and now they're changing units, and then the parking becomes an issue, and how many, you know?
As long as you can do, with the parking requirement for each individual business, for instance, the restaurant is very using in terms of how many parks contribute for seating, for health, as long as that total is under the threshold, they're okay in terms of actually traffic on the site. The only time you get in trouble is if you're looking at drive-throughs.
So, so, and I don't know how you guys feel on this, I'm sorry to add in and enter, which is disappointing because I think it gets in the way to your point of his business, but there's something that doesn't sit right with me with asking the owner of the building for an updated site plan multiple times, and the answer is, "I don't want to, so I'm not gonna." That, just based off a principle, doesn't sit well with me. So if I had to make a motion to be able to allow this gentleman to continue to move forward, it would be to request a new updated site plan on the entire property, so that not only his business, but any other business moving forward, we don't run into this and keep staying on this hamster wheel of...
Yeah, but...
Second, second.
But now we...
I only use that when you're here, I don't know why that is.
But we also approve Nesrela's to stay consistent, you know, and say with, we've set a precedent. Again, you'd have to tell this gentleman no, you know, based on, on his, doesn't want to spend...
Well, let's not go back down Nesrela's, because then the answer should have been, then Nesrela shouldn't have been able to go in without a new updated site plan. So if that's what we're going to do, I know you did, I'm just saying, if that's what we're going to do then...
Two to one.
Forever, hold on, let's not go down, because that's not on the table right now. What we're saying is...
We do have a motion.
Right, so I would make a motion that we would request an updated site plan from the owner of the building, so that we can move forward with putting good businesses in town in this building. It's just a site plan, and then we can pass it out for a site plan review, and then we can approve this guy, and we can go from there.
But we've been there half a dozen times already.
I think if you have an eager renter ready to rock and roll...
Been eager for quite a while, and they just get no response from that site plan.
And so if you go back, if you go back to the owner and say, "I'm ready to rock and roll," we're ready to go, the only thing we're missing is a site plan, and he says no, he's willing to lose your business over that?
Like I said, I can reach out to him again and ask him, but like you guys know, we've been at the front for a while, so I'm just frustrated with you guys.
I just don't see, but also, I don't understand how, if there's how many more square footage of building space is in there. So what are we going to do? Just say no every time, just waive it every time, because the guy feels like he doesn't need to adhere to the law?
Well, he's actually got a basis already.
That's Nesrela's, that's...
No, I understand, but the engineer who did this point, he has something to start with, so it isn't as if he'd have to go out there and start necessarily from scratch. And I'm confident there is something somewhere that we have.
I looked through the file, and we don't have the one with all of the opening of the land or anything like that.
Well, we need what we changed since, that's what we're talking about.
That plan there shows what's been changed. It shows all the new septic and everything, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, septic design plan, there you have a lot of the stuff on it. You have a motion, I, I, that we need to deal with.
There's a better option, we can vote it down, it won't hurt my feelings, I just, I don't see a better option, so, yet, that's all.
I was going to suggest that we wait till the next meeting and see if we can get anything from him, and I'd like to maybe try to search and see if I can find anything, because I believe when he bought it, he did something. That doesn't mean that it's available.
It's not in there.
No.
I spent a long time looking for things in each file, because I'd like it to be there.
For the address, I mean, even...
And there's been a lot of changes since then with the septic and whatnot.
I mean, you think there's got to be a site plan when he did the septic, he had to go through conservation and water health and everything there.
Right, but then it's like...
He had the hay bales all set up and lined up and whatnot, but that was indicated somewhere, but it doesn't include the whole entire parcel.
Just for my education, did the board, the board reached out, not just having the applicant reach out to him?
He was here.
It was December, I think it was winter, fall of 2021.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the statement was, told the Mr. Nesrela, "You need a site plan, you want it done, you get this, you pay for it, you have it done."
That was...
And he started with his property, and I think he did.
Well, that's what, that's what he said, right.
Cost those substantial amount of money.
So, I don't know, I just...
Well...
Because here's what ends up happening. We give him a, you know, a waiver or whatever the phrase is that I'm thinking...
We're never going to get it.
And then...
It's a domino, too.
But then what ends up happening is the next five businesses that go in, they'll go, they'll use that as the precedent. Unfortunately, he's storming the beach, and it sucks for him, because he seems like a good guy that's got his business ready to go, and we're just sitting here with the owner of the building. I mean, how would we treat any other owner of any other commercial building in town? We would say we need a site plan.
I don't disagree with that.
It doesn't seem like such a hard thing to come up with.
Really, that's where my frustration is, it should be relatively quick.
Right.
Because he's got a base, it isn't like he's got to start from absolutely scratch.
New voice, maybe he likes the sound of your voice better than us.
I'm from the past, I remember...
Maybe then, it might be good, like Tom said, to continue it to our next hearing, to give him a chance, a chance to talk to Mr. Maloney as opposed to, you know, a motion and second on the, but you do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, so we need to deal with that.
So either he can withdraw or change it to continue in the hearing or leave it the way it is.
So my, my question is, with the, sorry, with the motion that's on the floor, the motion is the request of an updated site plan from the owner, so if, if we pass that, then that would go to the next meeting, correct?
Tabled to the next, tabled to the next meeting.
Right, right.
And it sort of puts a little oomph in it, and then we can send him another letter.
Just that the board has voted, whether, whether it passes or not, I mean, obviously, that's going to depend on what our next action is.
Right.
What is the date of the application, how are we looking for time?
It's the 23rd, so, right? So it would be, because you did it like three days after our last meeting?
Yeah.
So we have seven plus today, so 18, 25, we have 20 days.
20 days.
And so our next meeting...
Not to show, not to show our cards here, right, but I'm a full, I'm a big fan of transparency. I feel as though if this motion passes, and then that goes to him in a legal document saying that the board is requesting this, it's no longer, "I just don't want to," but also it's saying, "No business is really going to be able to get in there unless this gets done," so it may just give it a little extra.
I think that's important, I think that is being incorporated into where the community and the support can open for future sites, right, and proper site plans.
And we'd all like to bring more business in, right, or the right businesses in, so...
This will place you for a couple of weeks, please, but I think unfortunately, that maybe we can motivate him to get this done so we can take care of it, because I think the symptom is to take care of it.
Yeah, for sure.
It is.
So...
So, on that motion, just to be clear, do you want to restate that motion?
I make a motion that we require an updated site plan from the owner of the entire property to be reviewed for the next meeting.
For 416 Plymouth Street.
For 416 Plymouth Street.
Continue this hearing.
And continue this discussion to the next hearing, which is June 1st.
1st.
Then that's second, that would be...
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Does anybody have any commentary?
Nope.
Are we good to vote on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any who oppose? Seeing as the ayes have it.
We'll just, we'll do what we can for you while you're doing it, too, at the same time, and hopefully we can just get it done.
All right. Thank you.
7:00 PM, June 1st, okay?
Yeah, you can, you can put on him, Mr. Maloney, to help out in your, to your benefit.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to add something to you. I was just, Mr. Kennedy. Oh, well, I was going to add that the 30 days will be up by, at that point, so we'll have the comments as well, because the 30-day period won't be up until the 23rd of May.
Got it.
Anyway.
Got it.
All right.
The comments that we have, well, we can't pop up, so we should actually close the hearing.
Well, we continued it, right, to June 1st at 7:00 PM?
Yes, we did, we buried it.
I wrote it down.
Now, this hearing is continued, so this one's going to be a little dicey, I believe. 314 Plymouth Street, request for special use permit and site plan review. 3:14 Plymouth Street, request for special use permit and site plan review. Who's here for...
Mr. Chairman, good evening, my name is Robert Brown, I'm here on behalf of Casco. We see Steve Donalds, I think you, you haven't seen him before, Aubrey Anusron, Larry Silva, and Gary McNaughton, our traffic engineer. Where would you like us to set up the board? So that everybody can see it over here?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, so Mr. Chairman, I want to say, you know, the law and law of the United States, about neutral participation, given, there's been a number of hearings, and let me just tell you what the matter is. In December, the board, it was, it's under site plan review with a special permit for drive-through, and the board voted against the site plan of the special permit. We feel it was voluntarily and conservatively remanded back to the board for further consideration between Town Council and myself on behalf of Casco and leaders and the applicants. So, we're here tonight based upon the continuing obligation and our desire to present traffic with respect to the site that you have in these updated site plans from March of this year. The question is, and I think it's gonna be as fresh as new, so that I would think that you could participate meaningfully. I don't mean to beat you guys twice, but it would be a five-member board, so it's right, a four, a five, instead of a four, a four.
Super majority.
Yeah. And I'm just, I'm not representing the board, I'm just thinking that...
Can you say that the man in black, are you saying, is that the fourth, is that one here?
Yes.
Your council, and we voluntarily...
No.
It wasn't a paper, I'm not...
I just wanted to...
Yeah. No. Um, you see, with the jurisdiction, we never continue to be under jurisdiction of the board, but we're counsel...
What did I do?
Into a very quick decision to remand that, because we didn't have a real opportunity to generate changes to addressing issues engineering wise, the concern about access and the traffic. If you look at the plans, and I'm gonna turn it over to Gary in a second, you can see how much cars could fit on this site in the heat, and the concerns of that, that's a real safety, we're taking the traffic because of the, seeing the other use across the street. We think that we can address that very easily. So what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, please, your board, is ask Mr. McNaughton to address the board with respect to the traffic. Is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman? That's the traffic of the issue, Gary.
It's in here, and that's what we're here for.
Okay, so, um, Mr. McNaughton, this is our traffic expert, and what present, Mr. McNaughton?
Good evening, this is Gary McNaughton with McNaughton Associates. We did perform a traffic study here in Broadhead. We looked at the three significant intersections along the car, so stop and shop all the way over to the McDonald's intersection with the intersection. We did counts, observing the number of vehicles going through these intersections back in February of this year, so the current counts, most of those, most all the impact, and that there are fresh counts. In this intersection, this site, the access through via the stop and shop, so the stop and shop traffic does operate less delay, currently banned, covered. All three intersections have below average traffic, we didn't see any evidence of safety deficiencies or anything along the car, based on some of that crash. Site access, we're working to set up boards over there, there's currently a number of unsignaled driveways on the front of the site, control of operating, those will be consolidated down to a single right turn-in, right turn-out driveway on the site front, and they will share access via the signalized driveway, strike in opposite, stop in off driveway. So, we did look at traffic generation for the proposed use on the site, and we have the Starbucks with the drive-thru, medical office building, and auto parts for the proposed within the site. Overall, you can see about two cars a minute in the morning peak hour, about 120 cars coming into this site. For most of those cars, they're already on the road. You're looking at coffee service, whether it's Starbucks, McDonald's, or the local park, from that one, honey. A lot of those trips are focused, are always driving by the site, diverting into the site, driving very near to the site. Certainly in the northeast, you don't need to go very far to find a coffee shop, service around. So when we look at, in the morning peak hour, there's only about 31 cars that are coming on the site that wouldn't have otherwise already been traveling down with 106. It's a little bit more in the Saturday peak hour, a little less pass-by usage, so that's up to 65 cars on that Saturday peak hour, so a little over a car a minute. We don't count for, you know, diverting trips from another use, right? We recognize, you know, whether you're doing a gas station or a coffee shop, people don't use more gas because there's another car station, you know, gas station, they don't pick up coffee because it's another coffee shop. So for the most part, these trips are coming from other, you know, businesses, that this might be more convenient, this might be something that's on their way, that they can get, or they have a preference for Starbucks or other businesses in the area. We don't count that in our study, we assume that this is a standalone facility doing its own business. We did what, we did then take the traffic from the site, we assign it to the adjacent roadways, based on traffic patterns, based on expected usage for the site, so about 35% of the cars are projected going over west of the site, about 65% from the east, and then diverting along, distributing along the local roadways, to the north and to the south as well. When we look at the operations of the intersections, and if you have traffic engineers in front of you, they all talk about level of service, and I was like, what you drive it is, you know, it's the same as your grades in school, except for two big exceptions, you can get P, and level of service C to D is actually considered pretty good, and a lot of work in Boston, you can have this actually, people in there. So in all of these intersections, they're currently operating at level of service A through C, depends on the specific time of day, on specific intersection, and looking at, as I noted, the stop and shop driveway operates with a decent amount of delay of the three intersections that you look at. We do add vehicles to that stop and shop driveway, and we are, this project would increase delay, particularly that westbound queue, queue on that westbound through, because of the single lane, left turns into the site would add some delay to that movement. And therefore, we're proposing to re-strike the road to widen, well, there's an apple left turn lane in the Walmart, that we were piggyback off that, re-strike that, there's that short left turn, that we don't need a lot of, a lot of delay going into the site, but that short left turn lane going into this site as well, and that mitigates that delay, doesn't have those, who is getting caught up behind somebody, trying to block them into the site, so that offsets the project in that, particularly on that movement in the westbound direction. The other big area we looked at was the drive-thru queue, and this was pointed out, the site has quite a bit of onsite queuing storage compared to other sites in the area. There's 16 that you can store within that drive-thru, and it's a double order board, which helps expedite and process traffic through, if you see anyone run through the front door, McDonald's, because he has a lot of those, so they're more so than the Starbucks in this area, but they're very efficient in processing that drive-through traffic through. You can store 16 vehicles within that drive-thru. So there's 16 vehicles from the window where they're picking up, back through the storage lane, up to the order boards, before they can get into the drive-thru, you know, parking lot aisle, which would only affect the site.
Oh, wow.
You can get, store an additional five vehicles, so you have 21 total vehicles on site, before you get out onto the driveway going out towards Route 106. You'd have 29 vehicles before you ever get to the point of impacting the public roadways. So that's an excessive amount of onsite storage for any drive-throughs in this area. We also compared it to some of the nearby Starbucks uses, so we were doing apples-to-apples comparison. Starbucks in the area averages nine vehicles that they can store in their drive-through queues, so this is considerably more than what we're seeing at their other sites. And then when you look at what you can do off the site, you know, it's considerably more than that nine on average that you're seeing as in those other Starbucks sites around the area. So, quick overview of what we did, have any big questions?
So on the egress, are you, are you ready?
No, no questions.
Uh, there's a egress there, you're gonna go through the drive-thru, take your coffee, you have to go eastbound coming out of the parking lot.
If you're exiting through that driveway, or you are circling back around through the site to go to the...
You're circling back around.
To where?
And then going out here?
That's not a control. You may have to...
Yep.
Let's do it.
This is not, this is the egress.
So there's a connection on the west side with...
That's to the driveway.
To the driveway, that connects up to the stop and shop.
Yes, so there's, there's, if a car is pulling in to get a coffee, heading westbound, there is no way other than to use somebody else's private driveway here for the storage unit, to go out back on the main Plymouth Street and continue going west. They have to go right, egressing the property.
Yeah, and we were proposing to restrict that to right in, right out, just to eliminate conflicts on the main roadway, keeping that traffic controlled at the signalized intersection less impactful and safer than allowing that left turn.
So again, there's no way of going out of the frontage on the property and going westbound on Plymouth Street.
As proposed, now they would need to use the signalized driver.
It reveals the property.
No, I have a question. I mean, Mr. brought it up the last time, our bylaw 16710L.
L.
L, where the frontage, or egress, your egress and exit has to be on the frontage, so you're gonna use a, you're gonna get a waiver for that, and use a private driveway to exit somebody's private driveway?
Sorry about fur, but we do have access onto the site, it's limited, but we do have access on the site front, and there's additional access we can share.
You have additional access if you go on someone else's private property.
Are they separate ones? Because I haven't had a chance to study them.
They are.
Yes, they are.
And I was done last September, I wanna say. And we do have the numbers for them, as of the decision letter on the storage one, two weeks ago?
I believe so. I'm gonna see how they're gonna bypass 16710L.
Larry, do you want to say something? Sir, I'm Larry Silva, sir, I'm a very experienced engineer, so I am an engineer of the area. So, when we discussed that, there was a division of the property into two lots. There is an agreement between the two to have the ability to cross over in order to be able to bring traffic out to the light, because to bring traffic out to the light is in the best interest of Halifax. In fact, now with previous project that I had worked on, which was for the 40B, we were directed, that is the only way that you're gonna bring traffic in and out of that site, and that you have to have it aligned with the stop and shop driveway that's across the street. The bylaw that you are referring to is written in order to prevent someone using a common driveway as, and for the purposes of being the only way in and out of their property, and to use it as a common driveway, not separate.
Mr. Silva, I think there's a big jump right there.
Well, I, I...
That's a big jump.
Just let me finish.
Sure.
What that bylaw says, it's actually...
16710L. Want me to read it? Access, I'll read it out loud. "Access to all lots shall only be through or across its legal frontage. No common driveways are allowed unless otherwise provided for within this chapter."
Okay. So, that's saying is, we don't want you to have a house, or this is somebody in the back, and that the only way you can get through it is through somebody else's property. This has legal frontage, and although it's awkward, police, you say going westbound, would be forced to go eastbound if they're going out the driveways in 106. That's not unlike any location anywhere, where there's a median, or there's two-lane arrangement, which is the only way you can go, because the direction that traffic is allowed to go. So to say that you have to go the other way, you know, to get the light to get out, that's not true. For someone who's going westbound, he can go east, he has to find a way to turn to go back the other way. But the light is really for the benefit of the community.
What, excuse me?
That's really about the benefit.
I don't want to interrupt you here, but we're talking about two different things. You're talking about what makes practical sense, in your opinion, as to the way you should access or egress this lot. However, the bylaw has always been pretty clear, that you have to at least be able to enter or exit over your own frontage.
Yes, and you can.
You can enter and exit, you can't, under this configuration, you can't turn left, but you can...
But you're, you're talking...
You can't exit, you can only exit one direction.
I've studied this plan, I...
The alternative, we could eliminate the restrictions on this, and allow lefts in and out, but I don't think that's in the best interest of the town, hell if that's a...
We're just talking about coming over a common driveway, giving it to the left.
So, then, Mr. Chairman?
You may, you may discuss this practicality, because Larry was indicating, but that's the stop and shop light, right? We all recognize that that is the stop and shop light, it's not a lot on any street for dwellings. The section you refer to deals in a large part of the borough. This is a commercial business, I know you're familiar with it more than I am, but it's a commercial, it's a commercial business on which allows drive-throughs. And this, the intent of the bylaw, the purpose, as it stated at the beginning, is to promote safety, traffic concerns, the best use of the land. The best use of access to this spot is clearly through the stop and shop light, which is right there. Now, we can change that, right? We can change that to do a left or right, it doesn't, it doesn't promote it, that is not our only access. We have a cross easement, cross-use agreement with a button property, right, as Larry indicated. So we have unfettered use of this, and what that allows us to do, as I think Gary indicated, is put 25 vehicles on this site in a queue. There's 16 here, picture, and then there's more. In fact, I should tell you that the medical office is, we're not sure it's gonna go through because so much time has gone, gone by, that at least may not be, the emergency medical business may not wanna come in, but that's the concept that we're using for, for flows. It just doesn't make, even under the bylaw, a reasonable interpretation with the intent, with the intent of the bylaw, it's never been tested.
I disagree, but...
Well, if you look at the intent of the bylaw, the intent of the bylaw, you know, that means you need the building inspected for more years than I think it counts, is to promote the health, health, safety, convenience, morals, I don't know how that got into this, and welfare of the inhabitants of Halifax. What we're doing here, by using that light, which controls access to a lot of different uses, is promoting the intent of the bylaw. If you look at L, if you look at L, access to all lots as, as Mr. Trup indicated, that's correct, but if you look through most of the sections of L, it talks about dwellings. It does talk about building and structures, but it's really talking about, I think, mostly going to hit dwellings, and not this kind of commercial business.
This is chapter 167 that we guide all of our site plans off of, this is not 40A that we're doing residential, this is 167, this is strictly geared to the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, for the laws and regulations that the town has elected us to abide by.
Yeah, I got it, and I register...
So it's not residential, is what my point is. This is a guideline for the planning board and the zoning board, and the planning board is here for commercial properties, and industrial properties or subdivisions, not residential individual lots.
Okay, well, you would agree with me, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but we are a reman, so it's hard not to. We have legal frontage, nobody disagrees with that. We have a right to do the drive-thru business based on a special permit, right? I'm looking at your...
If you're allowed a special, excuse me, if you can have a special... If you're allowed a special, excuse me, if you can have a special permit to do a particular thing, it's allowed as long as the conditions are met and satisfied.
And no for other waivers.
But the special permit wasn't approved, was it?
Not yet.
No, in fact, you deny, I, I don't think yet part of the site plan per se as much as, the decision that I read from December of last year was based on, on, uh, traffic.
It was, and, and 167-10L.
Well, then, but in your decision, all of you were quoted about safety concerns about the traffic, safety concerns, and this subsection was mentioned, but it was primarily focused on safety.
Yeah, sorry, no, you're, you're right, and this is also not meant to be argumentative. I think it's more to bring everybody up to speed from the conversation of last December, but it mainly was, um, from a regular traffic study, which knocked it out of park, right? Awesome. With that, I don't think the safety issue was specifically about the flow of traffic of the normal traffic flow, it was more of now we may, at the time, was proposing to put in a, a medical facility in that, an urgent care. And the big concern was is that how backed up 106 gets during those rush hour traffic times, and then all of a sudden somebody has a heart attack and the closest medical spot to bring them to is the closest part, which is a urgent care. And now we have to get fire trucks, we have to get ambulances, we have to get police officers, which are already taxed based off of our limited amount of support in those areas. And then therefore, on top of that, adding a double-lane drive-through into that, and the only way in and out is now through using an easement of another private property. That was, it wasn't the general traffic flow of your daily commuters, because I agree with you, people aren't going out for an extra coffee and adding traffic. I think what our conversation was in December was, what happens when police, fire, and ambulance and first responders need to get in there because there's a medical facility there, although that's not what it's being used for, we understand, but all of a sudden that crossed with the spiral on it and somebody's having a medical issue, now our already taxed first responders have to get in there, that's gonna cause an issue at six o'clock at night on 106 as a resident.
Mr. Elliott, I appreciate that. I mean, you're quoting the same quote, "I think based on all the safety concerns, not given with the established character of the town, we cannot issue this permit." If you look at the site plan and you look at the queuing and the use here, it basically wraps around this building and the entire remaining area of the parking area is available for this medical building because it comes on the south side of the property wrapping around. If you look, there's 16 cars in a queue. The average for a Starbucks night, I think we all know because you've all been on the board a long time, 16 cars, that's extraordinarily secure. You're not gonna have cars on the street because you got 16, nobody's gonna leave 16 cars deep on a Starbucks.
Well, but that's, if I could add, that's not the practice at Dunkin' Donuts, that's 14th, and last Saturday, there were four cars stopped on Route 106. Stopped waiting to turn into the parking area. So what, what numbers that you can come up with as far as queuing goes, that's not particular to Halifax. We've had complaints before where the police chief himself had said that wanted to send police officers down there to start ticketing people. And my only other question, if, if I could, uh, is for the traffic study, how much of the effect in front of Lionville slash Nano's, the Chinese restaurant and I believe Halifax Deli, they also have a turn lane, and now you want to put another turn lane in? So how is that gonna affect?
Sure, it, it really won't because we're able to, we don't need a long turn lane coming in here. The volume of traffic coming in, particularly where it's not in that evening peak hour that gets busy, it doesn't need an extensive length of left turn lane. So we're only talking about a short length that really doesn't impact the access into the other businesses and into Wal-Mart's.
You're talking about shortening the wall of the Walmart turn lane, right?
Slight, yeah, we need about an 85-foot turn lane queue lane.
I'll concede that that's a pretty long turn lane at Walmart.
But it does get
350 feet.
But, but I do, they do have a, I take little exception to the fact you said that it's not really gonna increase the traffic. Um, I, I think we're still gonna have congestion at Dunkin' Donuts. My experience has been people want Dunkin' coffee, I'm gonna give them Dunkin' coffee. You will bring some additional traffic in for Starbucks for people who want Starbucks. The only mitigating factor there is that 106 is pretty much the only east-west route. So it isn't like you're gonna divert from 58, uh, excuse me, Main Street, Plymouth to come down here for, for Starbucks stuff, but I, I think it will, it's not gonna use the same traffic. I think there will be additional traffic, or at least the congestion will be a little greater.
And we didn't account for any, you know, if you will, cannibalization from Dunkin' Donuts. We assumed it was completely standalone. In my experience, more of these uses you have, those excessive queues do tend to dissipate. Um, you know, they just, as they're in the world, they just, I'm not gonna sit in that queue and go.
Well, I'm just thinking from Plymouth to Bridgewater or West Bridgewater.
It might be the only one.
It's the only Starbucks. There isn't another one, I can't think of any other one.
And I, I know that a lot of people in Plymouth will choose to come here versus going the highway to Plymouth or going to Kingston. They will.
So
And Hanson?
Question, I don't mean to, sorry if I'm jumping in. Um, for clarification, are we talking specifically about a special permit for a drive-through or are we talking about the overall planning for the building?
I think the special permit is for the drive-through.
But is that the only thing on the conversation as of right now? Because I don't want to get into another conversation about the rest of the plan if what we're talking about is this. Because I would tend to understand where the, where, where your numbers are coming from here. However, I don't know if you're, I shouldn't assume, but I don't know if you're from Halifax.
I represent any Halifax and the latest legislature for
Yeah, no, all I would
I'm familiar with the town. I've been on 106 for a hundred years.
Yeah, all I would say is, is, um, I invite all of you to tomorrow at 5:30.
Starts at four o'clock.
Between four and 6:30, it might actually take you that time.
Yesterday I was back up, 2:36, 3:00.
So, so that's where, you can understand where we're coming from as being residents of the town, to be able to say, you're asking us to put yet another flow-through traffic business in here when it's already jam-packed to the gills. So that's where we're struggling with just, not to be argumentative, but to get on the same
No, 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 wait, wait, look, nobody holds congestion site in the town.
That's what I would ask, Mr. Chairman, and through you to your members, before you give a summary note about the, everybody has anecdotal information and data, which, you know, guys like Gary, you know, who do level of service, that's what they live in pretty often by those meetings. We ask, because I think that you should, we're asking respectfully to peer review us. We're willing to pay for it.
I'm just gonna offer that up.
Yeah.
I think
We like to pay a peer review.
That we should have a peer review.
Right, and again, um, I'd like to also present a memo working with, with the team about subsection 10 because it's important as to the character and the manner in which it's been employed in the town of Halifax and the true intent. Uh, I'll supply it on these end of tier constantly, whatever you want, but we'd like to address that substantively because in this instance, it's contrary to the intent of the bylaw. I understand the language, Mr. Trup, I get it, I read it, I read it before I came to it. I understand it. So what we'd like to do is have some peer review, get a memo, talk about it, perhaps legally because it's a legal concept. And, you know, I understand your grid, I've looked at it, I've studied your bylaw, um, but we would respectfully ask for that opportunity. It may be that we change the configure and the obstacles in the building to the medical use, so it may disappear, who knows? Um, we'd like to be, Starbucks would like to be in the town of Halifax. I mean, I think that says a lot about the town.
I'd be very much interested to see also how you plan on queuing the lights.
Yeah.
To, to add to this because
Good question.
Myself and residents there, you can hit the light at 58 and 106 and literally have four cars in the middle of the intersection with a red light and it's bottleneck now. And I don't know what your numbers are, our last indication was there was somewhere close to 19,000 average daily car coming through there, and that's a lot of cars to handle. So how, how were you, were you gonna queue the three lights, the ones at 58, Walmart, and what you're proposing to queue the light at the stop, referred to as the stop and shop light, but the stop and shop light, or is it just gonna be on the trip, uh, on the pressure plates that are all the, whatever?
Usually electric wires.
Yeah, it's the
Pressure plates have been a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually wires, we do video.
There's a lot of cars going through there.
Yeah, so the intent would be, you have to add the fourth light to this intersection. So you have to modify the signal, you have to modify the timing of it because it's not, you are just adding the fourth leg, but this is all on the applicant, this is not a request out of the town. So the applicant would need to, you know, conjunction with their neighbors, rework that signal equipment to accommodate the fourth leg, put in a couple of indications to the data, green, yellow, red signals, and then that requires timing modifications because I've added another leg to it. Because these are so closely spaced, you can't do one in isolation, you'll look at the offsets from, you know, it's the coordination, as we refer to it, of the three lights and make sure that, you know, to the best that you can, folks that are coming through are able to minimize the times they hit a red light. If they get through one green, maybe they can move the other to green. And that's all part of that next phase when you're designing.
And Mr. Elliott did bring up a, a big factor and it became aware at one of the last meetings, but on the urgent care factor, uh, when we was talking about emergency vehicles, uh, it, the fire chief down here who was originally from Pembroke has an urgent care in the town of Pembroke, and he was explaining that there can be as many as six trips a day to an urgent care medical facility, transporting emergency bases, people come in for urgent care and end up going to South Shore Hospital or wherever, and that anywhere between six and eight trips per day. So it's, it's not, and, and every time they go through those intersections, there's the lights, you know, from the emergency vehicles that stop all the lights red, and you want to see a traffic jam then, boy, you're gonna go for a tweet.
Well, we're happy, Mr. Chairman, through you to your members, to look at it traffic-wise and the experience and to also consider whether that continues to be part of our
And that was the main reason why I asked about what, what we're discussing here. If it's the drive-through, I don't want to get into that conversation because that will be for another time, obviously, but I don't want to start talking about the urgent care, although they're one in the same, because they're going in the same building.
Right, the emergency.
But if what we're talking, you almost have to talk about
You, you have to talk about the site in total.
Right.
Because it's gonna affect everything. And, and the traffic count's kinda deceiving unless, I mean, you can have 19,000 cars, but most of those cars are a particular time of day, and that's, that's my problem.
Yeah, that's why I rarely talk about average daily numbers because we really, we always look at, how many are going?
No, I understand, but most of that traffic's twice a day.
Right.
And typically more so in the afternoon for whatever reason than in the morning.
Always is.
Sure, everyone's going to work and everyone's getting home. And even with, even with work and home, it's, it's still crazy at that intersection. And, and that's my problem because we have, I'm thinking about the other sites there too that are currently vacant that might sometime be occupied. That's gonna add more flow, and that's my concern.
From a, from a legal, from a legal perspective, just one last thing, from a legal perspective, that's why I was asking what the topic was for discussion right now, because if what my issue is, is the overall plan, then I don't want to have an opinion on your drive-through if that's what we're discussing, especially this being a second round of, of legal discussion. So I'll keep it straight to that peer review and all of that, um, traffic studies and all that for the, for the drive-through. Just know that there's more conversation coming from there because I think that's probably one of the biggest concerns that most of us have.
Well, I would think that Gary would, you know, or anybody considering it on a peer review, would look at what's on the plan. It says an urgent care and they would consider it. Gary, I presume that that's what the peer would do.
Right, and most urgent cares tend to be people going on their own. You know, if it's something minor, they would, but
Yeah. I like to say, yeah, the urgent care, I'm gonna say it's kinda my specialty. Uh, I have done from California to New York, Florida, Texas, wherever between, I think I mentioned last time, I've done 152 of our urgent cares. Now, I'm not gonna dispute what the gentleman indicated about the amount of trips to the urgent care they see. Now, I, I don't know what necessarily would be driving that, and, and I can't challenge those statistics because I don't have something written down that says this is the average, but I do know from working, again, with large urgent care providers, independents, et cetera, they have expressed to me that it's very unharmed for an ambulance to kinda pick somebody up. Now, again, that's just what I'm hearing from them, and part of the reason they express that to me is they, they don't really want that to happen. Now, again, I understand somebody going down the road here, they broke their arm or something, they don't care, exactly, they see that sign that says medical facility, they're pulling in there and they have to be stabilized, and then the ambulance does have to come. But I do know that urgent care providers try to avoid that occurrence because their facilities are not set up to triage people and to do that, and so there are times even, and I deal with this, matter of fact, in Massachusetts, New Jersey, New Hampshire, where there's actually an organization out there that writes a code that's above and beyond what the building code requires for buildings. Now, currently, uh, well, we haven't gotten that point here for designing inside of this facility, but, uh, they, they mandate you set that facility up to accommodate what's called patients of size, that somebody that comes that, again, should have came, but they did, you had to bring them in, you triage them, they kinda pick them up with an ambulance. Okay, so that may be something down the road that would be more of a possibility, I think, than somebody honestly getting hurt, showing up, you know, and saying this is like emergency room as opposed to urgent care. Again, I cannot say that you wouldn't have sex, but I doubt that would really be the case. I mean, I think this is more maybe, I, I don't know, I mean, because again, working with that many different clinics, that many different clinic owners, they've expressed me
Well, again, something like that would, like Mr. Elliott said, it, it's off top of getting on the same breath too. It does affect the traffic flow greatly in the, in the center of town.
We can provide you, right, because the protocols are not that an ambulance takes someone to a place where they have a little room with band-aids. That's, that, you know, and we can provide you that information. Urgent care is if you got a cough, you can get it to the hospital, your doctor will see you, you know, we, we can provide you those protocols because there are protocols that the hospitals and doctors, they might send them.
My, my concern is not that the ambulance is gonna bring them to urgent cares, obviously that's not the reason. What I'm saying is if somebody's driving down the street, feels like they're having a, a heart attack or somebody break, you know, a kid breaks an arm out on, you know, out playing in the yard, and then their mother, right, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and a one-year-old, I can only imagine if one of my boys broke his arm, then my wife would go, boom, get old, right down the street, not knowing what it is, but seeing a medical sign on the side and say, at least that's something. And then they come in and say, no, 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 we don't do that, but now by law, I would assume they have to call
Well, yeah, you can't just send them away, you have to treat them.
You have to treat them, so, so now imagine if that happened even once, maybe twice a week, let's not say it was a day, let's say it was six times a week or once a day. What does that happen at five o'clock in the afternoon with four sets of lights and all those cars?
But is that a reverse of that?
Yeah.
Mr. Elliott, let's say you have a kid that's not breathing, just use your tech, go to bed, and they get, where's the closest hospital? Right, you're gonna go to Jordan, my call Jordan. You're gonna go to South Shore, you're gonna go, where are you gonna go? This, again, is a resource for the community that there's not a lot of options because you're either gonna get in a helicopter, go to Boston, or you're gonna drive your kid to South Shore, BID, you know, maybe you're gonna go to Tottenham. I don't know where you're gonna go.
I, I don't
At a pro?
No, I'm just saying you're gonna be thankful you have.
Yeah, no, you, you know, there's always the other
No, absolutely, I couldn't agree more.
So, again, the protocols, and we can provide you that information for urgent care, I don't think any, you know, if you have an emergency, you're gonna go wherever you can get care. But if you're having a heart attack, I had a pipe patch five years ago, I want a pipe patch to urgent care, my wife would have never taken it. You can urgent care.
I'm going to the hospital. It isn't the facility, I don't believe, I think it's just the congestion. I think it's the overall congestion of that whole site.
Mr. Chairman
In amongst the rest of the sites.
I, I, we appreciate, we appreciate what the site looks like. Like I said, I've been driving this for forty-some years. I understand the lights, I've lived with them, not as much as you, but I've lived with them for a long time. What, what makes this work, at least in our opinion, is as Mr. McNauton said, the coordination of the lights. It may be a benefit to the community, which you can't otherwise get because it's on our time that we're gonna coordinate these lights and maybe improve it, maybe improve it. Because if we don't add more, if we don't add more trips, which if Mr. McNauton says no, so there's 19,000 trips, we're gonna not have 19,000 because of Starbucks, like you said. I'm not gonna drive for an $8 cup of coffee, I'm sorry, I'm just not gonna do that, right? But the coordination of these lights might lead to a betterment in that area.
Can they
All right, Steve, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, no, that's okay, I, I'll just conclude with, with the, again, with the urgent care, obviously, the intent's not, you can't say that, you know, somebody would not show up here, I, I think it's more random, and again, and I realize it's, you know, And again, and I realize it's, you know, traffic is bad in particular peak times of the day. I think it would be Murphy's Law, obviously, to have that. Just happened to be the time also the ambulance was, you know, can I say that would never happen? No, but I would say the chances of that are very limited. That's all.
And that's good to know that you have that type of, that level of knowledge and expertise. I think what we also, what our responsibility is also to factor in the lack of resources that this town has as far as first responders go, right? So there's a lot of areas, but I think that that's why there's five of us up here, and there's seven boards that you have to go through, right? So, or not seven, but you know what I mean, so.
I think at this point, we need to, where you've offered up generously to subsidize the peer review, is it?
Yep, yes, yes.
If that's a go.
Yes, sir.
I think that needs to happen. And I think at this point, we've pretty much talked it out as far as the panelists. Somebody else has anything else to offer?
A hundred percent agree, I was thinking the same thing.
That we should probably table this.
So I'll make a motion.
Two actions is enough time.
Mr. Chairman, just so that we can, I kind of lies, if the peer review, are you going to do a peer review of the site plan as presented for March of this year and the traffic? I mean, the one and the same in this.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
It makes a lot of view the whole.
Yeah, I'd like the opposite. It doesn't work unless you do the whole thing.
Yeah, just to be clear on the record, thank you.
Mr. McNauton, would you like that in the form of a motion?
I was just going to say. I make a motion that we make sure that there is a revolving account for engineering and the amount of two thousand dollars set up that will do a peer engineer on the traffic and the site plan, and that we will continue this hearing till June first at seven p.m.
I don't know if we can get that done.
I can't imagine a peer review is going to be able to.
No, no, that's.
Okay, so then we'll push it to the next month.
Actually, because it's going to take, whatever, late May.
I think we should be thirty days.
But then would it be an extension on the site plan?
I'm just going to bring that up.
Okay, so let me redo my motion to.
Sixty days, that's even better.
So let's do sixty days to your point. What's the second meeting in July?
Obviously, our client would like to leave as soon as quick as possible. But if we feel sixty days is most appropriate. Gary, what's it going to take sixty days to get up here on this?
Do forty-five if you could.
We can always bring it in.
You can always have it shorter. You don't have to go sixty.
We can bring it in.
If we can get it done, we can schedule it to the next day.
Do we have to continue it to a certain meeting, though? But what if it comes?
Then we can change the, no.
So we go all the way out to the twentieth of July? So why don't we do the second meeting in June and then see where they're at? And then continue it at that?
Just so the board knows, I will be out of the country the second meeting in June.
Oh.
You are.
Italy, Greece?
Under fifteen, Mr. Chairman.
I'll be gone, I personally, that doesn't mean the board can't act, but I personally will be gone from the ninth until the twenty-second.
Okay.
Well, then, then we're good. You might as well not if you're going to share it. No, you don't, when we do it afterward, when you're here, it makes more sense because you're going to participate meaningfully and vote on this.
I'm going to redo the motion, ready? The motion will be that we have the revolving account and the amount of two thousand dollars set up with the town of Halifax, a peer review with PGB Engineering on the traffic and the site plan, and that we will continue, hold on, that will extend your site plan and your special permit to July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and continue this hearing until June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three at seven p.m.
But the chairman's gone.
So what she's saying is that she's giving you sixty days.
But I'll remember that.
Right, and if you're ahead of time, if everything's done ahead of time, we can go, but we don't have to continue, to keep doing continuances.
That way, we're not continued to July twentieth, and then we can't bring it. We'll just check in with you guys.
In other words, anytime before that.
And we'll continue it on that done.
In other words, anytime before that date at the end of July, in which she just put in the motion, if, when Chair Millius is back the first week of July, and you're ready, you come on our agenda, you're ready to rock and roll. If it is in June, which obviously he won't be here, it's a tie.
I've always learned, and I don't, I can't cite the jet in person, the hearings have to be a date certain so that the public knows.
Right, so the reason that I'm doing that day in June is so that we can check in with you and not make it that you can't come here until July twentieth. Not to, just so that you can come sooner.
We can, we'll be here, I'm putting June fifteenth at.
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
With the understanding that we're probably going to have a continuous to the first.
Unless you tell us otherwise.
And in July, you're the first.
July sixth.
You're the first and second Thursdays.
July sixth, then the twentieth. So I didn't want to put you all the way to the twentieth of July. You see what I mean?
Thank you. I'm marking into the continuation letter.
Yes, I was just going to say, we'll need a letter.
Yeah, and then that the site plan wouldn't expire at the forty-five-day mark, that it goes to the July thirtieth.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay?
I'll second the, want to say it again? No, just kidding, I second what she said. Y'all have made me do that, so I won't put anybody else in that. So I will second that motion.
That way you don't have to wait even longer than after that. Anybody else have a comment?
Discussion, changes.
You, we can answer this at home.
You guys go with this?
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second, we do have a second, right?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Larry. Thank you.
All right, give my space back.
Have a good evening.
Tom, is this, Tom, is this our only updated copy of the EDA document? Oh, is it that? Okay, I didn't know if that was our only one.
Thank you, have a good night. Thank you.
We are ready to move on?
Yes.
There's a, not a hearing continued for three fifty-nine minutes? Site review for contracting stores. I'm going to add in that this is a continuation, so. There's some limitations involved in this.
Thank you.
Thank you, how are you? Good.
How's it?
Good.
What's going on? How are you guys? Welcome back.
Thank you.
Number two, members of the board. My name is Gabriel Diaz, I am representing Mr. Del from Black City, I'm in Black City. And we're very consulting Mr. Henry in addition. I am going in for him today. So, last time we were here was January fifth. That was the last time we were in front of the board. During that time, we had some changes done in the plan, and we also got a special permit from the zoning board. The use of the building was now like industrial, that's contractor shop. There is no retail sales here. So you had in the communication that was given, pretty much was the last questions, last things that were commented here at the last hearing. We can go over the methods if you'd like. I'm going to get my copy here. And so first thing that we had comments was the building itself. Now, we have a more architecturally pleasing facade than we had before. So previously, the building. So originally, the building was pretty much a typical building. Now, we have still many years in front. We have a awning that's lower level, upper level. And we also have horizontal clav floors in there. And so that's, those were the changes that were architecturally obligated that we took. There was a concern from the government buildings that's next door in terms of site distance pulling out of that building. We have some larger trees out in front of the area, which are going to be removed. And we are putting smaller, smaller shelves, which will pretty much serve as a promotion for Mr. Martin's business. As a landscape, landscaping business. This is not a retail store, this is just a contractor's yard. Pretty much, they're going to have material storage. They're going to come here in the morning, leave to their proper sites, and come back and then go to their homes. So the traffic is limited. I will be touching on the traffic a little bit afterwards, and I'm just going to keep on going with this here. First item, we did receive the special permit from the ZBA. And number two, we have a location of the historical district. Now, there is an eleven-by-seventeen sheet there which shows the historical district now. And circled in green, we have a notice that shows that it's just outside that historical district. So that does not apply to us. The number of parking spaces, originally, we had, we had a request to have these eighteen spaces, we have provided those eighteen spaces. We have fifteen spaces out in the front of the building. Inside of the building, there are three more spaces, pretty much for the company to use.
You said inside the building?
On the back of the building is where those spaces are to go in, to park in. We did, there is also more space in the back for additional parking, if need be. We believe eighteen spaces is more than enough for what it is, but there's the, there's space for more if more is required or needed. And the site proposes to use eighteen wheelers for delivery material. We did an auto turn on that, which shows, I believe, it's right there. Here. So here, we're showing a WB fifty truck, which is huge. And it does turn around. There is, it's a little tight because of the size of the vehicle. This is on page thirteen, last page of the plan.
Thank you.
There you go.
So here also, we're showing the parking spaces and how it will fit inside of those spaces. We have number five, shows salt and sand storage area, which is a post-concrete pad enclosure. So one of the, one of the things that we will be storing there is salt. And we do have on page three, there's a little picture there of the shed, which will be the one on the left. And under there, we have added the BMPs for salt storage in that area. Number six, the trees in the rear of the property are close, need two to four feet in height. We requested eight to ten. We have to flag, we have trees in the back that are eight to ten feet. That change was given, so evergreen trees that were going to be placed in that area. And a butter requested wall and trees in the rear of the site to be saved. They received, you know, today that we did, the client did reach out, tried to reach out, never could get to them. So we're willing to flag them and figure out what we need to do with that, but we wanted to do that walk with the client with a, with a whole, with a butter.
Do you mind me jumping in on this? I don't know if that's appropriate. Was the attempt to reach out, because I remember the abutter was here, right? Last time you guys spoke, I think we were downstairs, actually. Was there an attempt to try to negotiate there? Or was it more of an affirmation of we will save those trees that you're requesting? What?
I mean, the lady asked if they could move trees and we agreed that she didn't sell that dating or nothing was mentioned after.
Okay. No, I was looking for clarification as far as if you needed to talk to her because they couldn't be saved, but you wanted to move them, or if they could be saved and you just wanted to make sure she was cool with it. I just was looking for clarification. So if that's the case, obviously, we just need to make sure that the abutters.
Are we talking about Mrs. Terrell?
To the back left.
Back left, yes.
Yes.
Could you just give us your name for the record, please? Just the one that just spoke that spoke.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Number eight, the traffic within this area is quote wicked. So again, it's.
Uncoordinated.
I know.
There is a limited amount of trips that we're generating here. We have provided here small trip generation data that we can find that will apply for this. We use a trip generation floor of office, which generates more than what we're proposing here. So in essence, we have eighty-five total daily trips. And in peaks, we have nineteen during the morning and twenty-two during the afternoon. And that is pretty much all we use.
No, I'm sorry, I'm going to do that. You did say there's, you know, retail. No, 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 so there was no customer activity. It's as strictly personnel.
That's, yes. So what we're proposing pretty much is employees get in there at seven in the morning, they leave out to the sites, they come back in the afternoon, they leave in their cars.
The two worst ones.
I have a question to piggyback on that one. Do you do landscape design or anything that people would be coming to the office for or anything like that?
Next question, Mr. Chairman.
No, no.
We don't do landscape design. We do have someone that would recommend the site to work with.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have our own landscape designer to help with.
Okay.
So in essence, trip generation here is minimal.
Did you set it up? Tom, we're going to jump in here. Did you set up the zoning wood abuse, the like hours of operation, when they'd be leaving, when they'd be exiting, that type of thing? You know, I know that if it was part of the conditions and lighting and all that stuff, that's all been worked out with the.
I do believe so, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I do believe so, that was discussed with the ZBA.
I was going to say, knowing our ZBA, I'd have a hard time believing that they would have caught that.
Do we have a coffee?
And I mean that respectfully.
We did not include it there.
Maybe we should have seen a coffee special. You can get one.
Yeah, we can. Right, because there was a discussion, you know, seven o'clock to five or six, however late. But in the wintertime, when they were, the trucks would be out plowing, there's no way you're going to be able to put a time on the plow trucks coming in and out. You know, certainly based on how much snow you're getting and that type of thing, but.
Judging by the past couple of winters, not that.
Don't curse. Don't curse this. Don't say.
What'd you do that for? I didn't even have to take my snow blower off. How are you going to?
You only do it free or.
Yeah.
So to the last comment that we.
I want my driveway plowed now, you too.
This goes back to salt storage. The salt will be stored outside the critical area in zone 2 or anything like that. We will still follow all the regulations needed for that type of storage. And if you have any questions that.
I missed the first part. Did you say something about clap, clapboard?
Yes, horizontal clapboard.
Oh, in the front and then, you know, I just personally like to thank you personally. Thank you very much for that. It was a big concern. A lot of people, you heard, being in the center of town, what it would look like as opposed to a tin box. And I appreciate the effort that you put in to keep our town looking the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I make the assumption, because I'm late to the party here, that we've gone through a compound and all that, that's all the resolved issues?
Yes.
Yes.
We haven't done a peer review yet, though, because we were waiting for them to get their special. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Again, I think a peer review is always in order.
We do too.
So we've been sending all of our site plans to peer review, assuming that it's, you know, gets to this point?
I mean, this doesn't look like that extraordinary site that should be a big deal, but.
Do you want me to redo the special permit decision letter?
Do you have it?
I, I just pulled it up on the menu. Or do you want to read it?
Well, I think we can, we have time to do that. If we, especially if we've tried to request for it to give a review, we can bring it up because we're going to have to take the list to the next meeting at least.
Okay.
Assuming you get someone to look at.
I would assume that with something like this, peer review.
Yeah, this is, this has got to be pretty quick. Would you agree, Rick? This is a pretty quick.
Yeah, it shouldn't be that bad.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to make sure that you have a revolving account set up with the town and the amount of $2,000.
That doesn't mean you'd spend all of that, but.
No, right.
Maybe you'll call prior to.
Yeah, but just so that we have it, that we will, that we will send this out to PGP for peer review, and we will continue this hearing till.
First.
Want to be consistent and do the June, do you think June 1st would work for this one? Or do you want to do the June 15th? We'll continue it if we have to. So June 1st, June 1st, 7:00 p.m. Do you want to recap?
We believe that the plan is pretty much completed. If any.
Yeah, pretty.
You know what it is?
Which, which are to be consistent?
Yeah, you know what it is? It's, it's when we have nine questions and you answer all nine of them efficiently. It makes things expedite, assuming that there isn't a major issue with the design of the, of the site plan to begin with. But so that we can be fair and unbiased, we send everybody to the site plan review.
During the negotiations, in the decision letter, was the lighting issue for the parking lot?
They had a light.
The caveat in the decision letter were. I'll just read, I mean, like, it goes through the whole, like, you know, the hearing and the board voted unanimously to, 5.0 to grant your special permit with specific conditions. No storage of fertilizer and/or hazardous materials, no fuel storage. Hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Change the facade to look more like a farmer's porch and no porta potty storage. A motion was made by a member, Tina Kenyon, and seconded by Robert Durgan. Yeah, and that's, that's the caveat.
The porta potty issue come up because there were five porta potties on the front.
I think so.
Yeah. So.
I have to assume also that that special permit has been recorded?
I assume so, yes.
Well, we, you should have confirmation that it's been.
So then I'll add that to the motion that we make sure that the special permit has been recorded. They have to wait 20 days before they could record it, and that was on.
I'm pretty sure that they did.
May 4th, so.
100%. But first, they have to pretty much, we get one of those straight to the registry office.
But is there a 20-day?
20 days, yeah.
So, May 24th?
Can't end on a non-business day, that's the other.
Oh, so what is the?
But May 24th, we're, we're.
Because we're talking about June 1st.
Yep.
Right, so.
Yeah, so we should be fine.
I have a moment for the first.
It's a Wednesday, so.
Yeah, if anything goes on with the peer review, I guess we can continue.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what June 1st will be. Is it June 1st or June 3rd?
June 1st.
June 1st. That's what June 1st will be, is come back, it's on the peer review. We ask any other questions that we need to do, we get from the town, and then we make a decision one way or another.
Usually.
Is that cool?
Okay.
So that was your, that was her, she had a motion.
Yep.
Do you want to recap it?
Yes.
Okay.
Verbatim. From 1972.
It's not that easy, is it?
No, now you've got me started. Okay, we're going to set up a revolving account and the amount of $2,000 with the town of Halifax. It may not be that much, but it's just to cover it. You'll get back anything you didn't spend. We'll do a peer engineering with PGP. And before June 1st, you'll have your special permit recorded at the registry of deeds, and we will see this hearing continue to June 1st at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Here we go, opposed. Very well.
Thank you. Good job.
Very well.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for saving the walnut trees.
Yes, sir.
So I think we probably could continue that and look at the, look at the office, and do you think that? About Ryder.
And actually, Brittany, exactly, you said love to have your town, love to have your business. And they clapboard and the awnings and.
What else can you ask?
What else can you ask? And it's nice business company.
It was going to be.
It was armor.
It was going to be a harder sell than that 10 box, like you were saying.
Because it's consisted of being armored for everything since the last.
Here are the nine things you wanted. Here they are. What are you going to do that?
J.B. Moore commented on that.
I think we need to, I mean, typically, people should take.
People should take notes.
But it doesn't have.
100%.
You know what I mean?
What we need is some, something from their engineer.
So we need.
And then send that to our engineer and have them work that out.
So maybe we should make sure that we contact him, Fabroski, and ask him to get us.
Yeah, to get a report from his engineer.
Right, and then maybe send it to peer.
Send it to the peer review engineer and get their current.
Okay.
And that way they can go back and forth if they have to, or address whatever they have to.
Right.
But yeah, I, I think this should be tapered until we can get a, a report from the owners of Mr. Fabroski's.
Oh, it's just Ryder's way.
I 100% agree.
And then send it to our reviewing here.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, I think.
I'll make a motion that Tim Fabroski get us a, as built from his engineer so that we could send it to peer engineering. We should make sure that his revolving account has any money in it, enough money to go to peer engineering, and we will have that done as soon as we get that.
Yeah, note further action will be taken until we receive that information.
Anything else?
Need a second?
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here we go, the opposition. Get a pass.
See how easy this is, Tom?
Okay. Bills. There you go.
That's my.
It's your thing.
My role here now, right?
Night, Mr. Corrigan.
We have a bill for $90 for a legal ad number 14299 to the Express Newspaper.
I'll second pay the bill. You made the motion, right?
Yeah.
That's in the formal. I was just going to ask you.
Yeah, I make a motion that, yeah, we have a motion to pay a bill for $90 invoice A12032CL. And on here, it is legal ad number 14299, the amount of $90 to Express Newspaper.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And you folks need to approve some minutes?
I cannot participate in it as I was not in there.
Okay. We have meeting minutes for April 6th, 2023. I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as Brad.
Was I there?
It will be Amy, Rip, Bert, and Brendan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know, the last one is just indicating that the town will vote for any kind of dealer. Can we send out a note to issue all these like? Is there any other business?
Yep, there. So usually I just say this from Bridgewater, Pembroke, and Hanson, and pass it around and make sure anybody doesn't want to look at any. You good? Okay. I think that's good, Tom.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting if you are all set, Mr. Chairman. Very good.
I'll second.
Motion and second to adjourn, we are adjourned.